It is 5:30. If we could call the regular Board of Education and the Amherst and Amherst schools to order by standing and punching the flag, please. My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. I think those students should come every month. Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wackel.
Here.
We entertain a motion, item four, to adopt the agenda, including any addendum that you've received today. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Item five this evening would be a presentation by the Nord Principal.
Thank you. All right, hello, everybody. I am Ashley Harrigan, Nord Principal. So we have the honor of having the Good News Report for this month. So I brought some friends with me. So what I wanted to showcase this month was all of the different clubs and activities that we have here at Nord. So I'm going to first call up Kindness Crew members. So if you're a member of Kindness Crew with Mrs. Kramer, Mrs. Lyman, can you come on down, please? Kindness Crew kiddos, can you come on around here? All righty. So as they're kind of filing down here, this is just some of our Kindness Crew, because behind you are two of our fixtures. We had so many Kindness Crew students this year that we actually have to have two different group meetings. So Mrs. Kramer said it wouldn't be kind if we kicked people out of Kindness Crew, so we now meet in two different groups. We have a green group and a yellow group for Kindness Crew. So I'll turn over Mrs. Kramer and Mrs. Lyman to sponsor that.
Yeah, so our Kindness Crew, we work on spreading kindness in the building, in the community, to students in the hallways. And our Kindness Crew kind of thinks of different, like, unique and fun ideas and how they can do that. And so tonight, they wanted to share some of the favorite parts of Kindness Crew. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Go ahead and share.
My name is Willa, and my favorite part of Kindness Crew is that we get to spend, and that we get to spread kindness and joy to all school.
Hi, I'm Aubrey, and my favorite part about Kindness Crew is when we made the flowers and brought a lot of nice jo- um, joyfulness to the school.
Hello, my name is Timothy, and the thing that I liked best at Kindness Crew is when we hung flowers up in the hallway.
Um, my name is Elena, and I like Kindness Crew because we get to spread kindness and positivity through the school.
My name is Vera, and my favorite part about Kindness Crew is that you're able to learn teamwork and you're able to make new friends.
Hi, my name is London, and my favorite part of Kindness Crew is that we get to show the powerless kids from third grade a tour of our school. Thanks for listening.
Give it a nice. Thank you. Yes, that's the exciting thing about Kindness Crew is in May, when our third graders come over and visit, it's you can see their Kindness Crew, they wear their T-shirts, and they're the ones who give the third graders a tour of the building, so they get all the inside scoop. So next up, if you're here for Best Buddies, can you please come on down? That is our next group I'd like to showcase, and it's new to Nord this year. So Best Buddies, also Mrs. Kramer. And Ms. Castello also does Best Buddies. She is out on the journey. Turn over to Mrs. Kramer.
So our Best Buddies group, this is the first year that we are participating in Best Buddies this year at Nord. So it is with our fourth and fifth graders, and we pair our fourth and fifth graders up with students in our special education classroom. They do a bunch of different activities. We pair them up, and they bond in some different ways. And they wanted to share tonight some of their favorite parts, favorite memories from Best Buddies.
My name is Declan, and some things I like best about Best Buddies is that we get to get paired up with special needs kids and get to know them and, like, do things with them. And we did, like, bingo, and we made cookies. And when kids walk down the hallway, sometimes they think that they're weird, but they're really cool and they're really not weird.
My name is Alyssa, and the stuff I like about Best Buddies is I like how we get to, like, know our buddies a lot and, like, learn so much about them. I like learning about my best buddy, Olivia. She's super kind, and she's always, like, um, like, is active and likes playing. Like, she really likes super games, and then she'll also, like, play basketball at recess. I really enjoyed how we got to go on the field trip in the fall, and we got to go on hayride and really, like, talk and connect with our buddies.
My name is Alia, and what I like about Best Buddies is we get paired up with a certain buddy, and we get to know about them a lot, and they get to know about us. And I especially like when we go on field trips together.
My name is Elijah, and what I like the most about Best Buddies is just being to learn about them more and have fun with them at the same time.
Hi, my name is Landon. I enjoy all the activities we do in Best Buddies, especially when we played bingo and went to a pumpkin patch. Thanks for listening.
May 3rd is the Best Buddies Walk for Amherst. All righty, and Mrs. Kramer has our next group, which is our Rocks Group, which is ruling our experiences. Mrs. Kramer doesn't like it. So Rocks Girls, come on down.
So our Rocks Group, Rock stands for Ruling Our Experience. These are some of our Rock Stars, our Rocks Girls. This is our fourth year here at Rocks, which is a fifth grade program for girls. And Rocks is all about our fifth graders ruling their own experiences and being in charge of their journey here at Nord, and as a fifth grader, and as a girl, and being independent, and being strong, and showing other girls this superpower that they have. And so they wanted to share what they love most about Rocks.
Hi, my name is Ainsley, and this is why I love Rocks. Um, so Rocks stands for Ruling Our Experience, and it teaches us, girls, how to live a happy, healthy, independent, and productive life. Personally, I love Rocks because it has helped me. So personally, Rocks has helped me so much with my confidence, and, um, uh, it taught me that I have a voice and that I'm so strong.
Hi, my name is Abigail, and my favorite thing about Rocks is how we get to do fun activities, teaching us, girls, how we get to use our voice in our own ways, and how we can stand up for ourselves and others, and how we're independent the way we are.
Hi, my name is Ava, and some activities that I like in Rocks are, like, there's this one where we, there's like this chocolate river, not really, but like, you'd like, you'd like link arms or whatever, and like, you'd walk across, like, paper marshmallows, and like, you don't, you're trying not to fall in. You use teamwork to get across, and it's like really fun. It's like, and, um, there is like this one where, like, we like partner up, and like, we, there is like the scenario, and we got that scenario, and the people out there watching us would try to guess what communication style that was. Um, so yeah, and sometimes Mrs. Kramer would give us snacks, so yeah. So yeah, thank you for listening, and remember, Rocks Rocks.
All right, and next I would like to invite Mr. Corrick and Mr. Matakovich down. They are going to share about our Young Men's Group, which meets a couple times a month. And they're going to share about that.
We meet once a month.
Once.
Once a month. Uh, so yeah, we coordinate our Young Men's Group here at Nord. The boys that are invited to the group are boys that maybe are having some issues with trouble or, you know, they need some positive role models in their lives. And so we meet once a month. Half the time, we provide breakfast, we kind of sit around, we eat. We have a social circle, talk about maybe some things that are going well for them, some things that are maybe not going so well for them, maybe something that they might need some help with. And then that's kind of our first half of it, and then the second half is more or less unstructured. We run around in the gym, play different sports each week, team building skills, camaraderie, and just kind of getting along. Anything else to add?
Uh, just to piggyback off that, like he said, we go to the gym, we, the biggest thing is we create goals for these kids. Like, we want them to see the bigger picture. Um, and having those goals help them just get in, get through their way with life is how I like to work it. So that's it, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Corrick. And then the final thing I wanted to share with you tonight, we had the 24 game competition. I think last year I shared with you the same thing. And so I would like to bring down our fourth grade 24 contestants. Come on down. So these guys, minus one, represented, and Ms. Bachman ran that, ran that group. So they started, oh, gosh, guys, when did you start? In June or mid-November? Uh, coming before school, when was it?
Well, um, well, I think we might have, like, started finalizing, like, who would go into the competition in, um, November?
November, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, it was a long time. They've been giving, coming early in the mornings to practice Math 24, I'm sorry, the 24 game. So does anybody, we, if you look up here, this is who we had placing. So Alyssa got first for all of Lorain County at the 24 game competition. Oscar came in second in that competition. Aubrey's not here, she represented us, and Tim represented us as an alternate. Does any of you want to, would you like to talk about your experience? Oscar, go ahead, Oscar. Tell us all about it.
Uh, so 24, it was pretty intense, but, like, you had to be, like, really good at, like, math to, like, like, go to the championship. But it was just intense, exciting, and, like, cool.
Yes. And it's a game where you have to, you have four numbers, and you have to come up with 24. You can use any of the operation. But if you, like, guess and get it wrong, you get a strike. And you can only get two strikes, and then you're out of the round. So like, lots of pressure. Not only do you need to know your math facts, but then there's that pressure if you get a strike because you don't want to get another strike and then get out. So please give it up to our fourth grader. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Tim. You're fine. Tim, you're fine, you're fine.
Okay. I like the 24 competition because I got really fast at my math facts.
All right, can I have my fifth grade 24 contestants come on down? So at the ESC, they do this competition for fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade. So we have our contestants coming down from fifth grade, and it was another great year for us at Nord at fifth grade. Meredith won first place. Alexandra got second place. Ezra got fourth place, and then John John was our alternate, who actually got first place in the, in that round as well. So how many of you participated last year? I don't remember. So we had all of you came back for a second here, so also, do any of you want to share with us what it's like? And maybe the difference between the fourth grade game and the fifth grade game, because it's fractions, right?
I mean, it's a speech.
Sure, go ahead.
Hello, um, thank you all for being here. My name is Ezra. I would like to talk about 24. So it all started in fourth grade, um, when I first got invited to 24. I agreed to it because I knew I'd enjoy the competition, my math fact with it. And I'm glad that I did. I knew, um, that I grew my math skills as well, so that I did. So my experience in 24 was one that I'll never forget. Not only did I agree to participate in fourth grade, but I did in fifth grade. It was fun because I, um, got to practice math while being with my, um, friends. So, do you see that? And it's not just about fun, though. I benefited a lot from, um, I got to enhance my math skills, um, increased, um, my problem solving and critical thinking as well. Um, it's an all-around great thing for us, and I hope more people do it.
Like, would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Go ahead.
One of my favorite parts about 24 is just the competitive part of it. It's really fun to compete with some of your friends and know that some of your people in Ohio know how to play this game. And it's just testing how well you can do math facts, I guess, under pressure. And oh, boy, it's always fun after lunch.
All right, let's give another round of applause. And the last thing I just wanted to share with the board tonight is that we found out a couple weeks ago that Walter G. Nord School was awarded the Momentum Award, one of the Momentum Awards for the 2024, for this, this school year. So let's give a round of applause to Walter G. Nord. So we were one, there were nine, 193 total schools that were awarded the Momentum Award this year from ODEW. We got this award because we increased our performance index by three or more points from the previous year, and we have an achievement rating of four or more stars. So that is a testament to the hard work our students do day in, day out. They're really well-rounded students, and the hard work of our teachers. So just wanted to share that, guys. Thanks. Thank you, thank you.
Item six would be hearing of the public. I don't think anyone has signed up to speak with us this evening. So we will move on to item seven.
My only question for you and the superintendent is I have a rather lengthy presentation on the profiles. I didn't know if we wanted to release the audience. I would love it if you would stay. Or Mike, if you wanted your guest to present. It's up to you.
No, we normally allow families to leave because they have dinner and other sports and other events. So if you're a person, you can break if you'd like it.
It'll take a four minute break.
Thank you for being here, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
If we come back to order, please. We are going to move on to item number nine, and we'll get back and pick up item eight, which is the treasure. Mr. Molnar has a special guest this evening, so we would like to have that presentation right now. So Mr. Molnar.
Before we go on to Mr. Resnick, who's here with us, we wanted to turn over to Joe Tellier. He's brought two new staff members. He wanted to share some information about, introduce you to them, so that they can also say hi.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Molnar, and thank you, Board of Education, for allowing me to introduce two phenomenal math teachers who will be joining Amherst School's team, Dan Steel High School this fall. Before I introduce them, I just want to thank the interview committee that joined me in the selection process, Human Resource Director Thelo Deli, School Counselor Sarah Rigda, Assistant Principal Denise Abbott, and we had two math teachers on the committee, Joby Kramer and Brian Caesar. They spent a long afternoon and evening ensuring we got the right individuals to work with our students. So first I'll have Hannah Weber stand up.
Hannah is an Amherst alumni. She attended Bowling Green State University for seven years. She has an education. She taught at St. Peter's for five. The last two, she's been at Clearview High School. Some fun facts about her, she has an identical twin, loves to read, cook, and travel. Her favorite place to visit is Longboat Key, Florida. And what the committee loved about meeting with Hannah was her background included not only teaching high school, but she was also at the middle school level. So she really understands the progression when you're in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, before they even get to the high school. So we thought that was very good. She started reminiscing about her fond memories of being at Steel. She had Mr. Leonard, Mr. Sumser, so she thought it was so cool that she's actually going to be sharing classrooms and hallways with the teachers that taught her and got her here. Extracurriculars, she's involved in student council. She tutored with Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, and was a committee member for the MTSS, DLT, and DLT teams. So please welcome Hannah Weber.
Anybody want to share him?
I'm just very excited to be a comment again.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, thank you, welcome.
Justin Zeke, if you could please stand. Justin Zeke is a, Zeke is a Amherst resident, and he's joined with his wife, Miranda, who's an alumni of ours. He also has two daughters, Jocelyn and Roy. Jocelyn is a second grader at Powers, and Roy is a kindergarten at Powers. Did I get that right?
Jaclyn.
Jaclyn. Jaclyn, I'll get to learn it, okay. He attended Ohio University, where he rode on the crew team, and played football. Taught and coached in Texas before moving back to Ohio, and currently teaches math at Sandusky High School. Some fun facts about him, he's married to an Amherst alumni, loves to bike with his family and play golf. And what the committee really loved about meeting with Justin, when we asked him why you're interested in this math position, he talked about, I enjoy teaching math and always wanted to be a teacher, but his love for kids and being in the Amherst community. So his roots are here in Amherst, and he's looking to stay. We are looking for him to stay as well. When listening to his answers just over and over again, it always circled back to the importance of relationships, getting to know where your students are, and to grow and support them. So I hope you all see what the committee saw in these two. Thank you for, uh, board approving them, hopefully.
And also, we have with us, Mr. McToney, the future principal of Nord's family. So Nick, like, turn over to you if you want to stand up, introduce everyone and say a few words. I'd love to hear from them.
Absolutely, yeah. How could you not be excited after that presentation? I lost my mind already, so thank you for that. But I want to thank the board on behalf of my family. These past seven years here in Amherst have been such a blessing, and I started off teaching here at Nord, so to come back home and work with this amazing staff and excites me, the students, just how excited they are coming to school, and I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you again, thank you. I'm really excited.
Aren't you going to introduce me or what?
Marley, Marley. Thanks for having me.
So for a moment, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Resnick to do a presentation about vouchers in Ohio. Again, everyone who's, who's here, you're more than welcome to stay. If you'd like to duck out for family reasons, dinner, whatever, you're more than welcome to also leave at any time. I know you have family obligations as well. So thank you all for being here and look forward to working with all of you.
Mr. Resnick, could you add the?
Sure.
Mr. Resnick is here from the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding, and also Vouchers for Ohio, which has a lawsuit going on. And so with us also is Bill Phyllis, who is going to be here on Zoom.
Tian.
See if I turn the volume on. Bill, are you with us? He's muted, but he's here.
Okay. Well, that's good, we can talk about it. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Well, thank you. I don't go much wrong with my unit here, but I can't, I don't have any video, but you don't need to see my face anyway. That'd scare you.
No, that's okay. And I'm going to turn you toward here, so you can see him. And you see him up there?
Hello, Bill? It says my video is stopped.
Well, we can hear you, Bill, so thank you very much for joining us.
Perfect. That's all I need. All right, so first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. President, Superintendent, members of the board, for your patience and inviting me back. And I'm accompanied this evening by my stepmom, Sherry, and it's her job to make sure that I get where I'm supposed to go. And I do want to, I do want to give Bill a little bit better introduction because he certainly deserves a little bit better introduction. Most of you are probably aware of the Derawf lawsuits from what is not a long time ago, back in the 1990s. Well, Bill Phyllis is the Bill Phyllis that made those lawsuits happen. So when I introduce Bill Phyllis, especially in a crowd of people who don't know him, I always add Bill Phyllis, comma, the legend, because to those of us in public education, he is. And we're very honored to have him as the head, the director, the face of these two campaigns I'm going to talk to you about this evening. So I am a member of the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding Steering Committee. I am a former member of the Canton City School District Board of Education. If I come back in a year, hopefully, I'll pick the word former off. And this conversation started, actually, with member Messer, who stopped by our booth at the Capitol Conference. We had quite a conversation about this, and we started talking about it. And I'm here and happy to be here. And if I can figure all this out, we're just going to go ahead and go. So there's the cover page. Okay, I want to posit two things with you. The first is the Ohio Constitution. This is Article Six, Section Two, the part that talks about school funds. General Assembly shall make such provisions by taxation or otherwise as with the income arising from the school trust fund will secure a thorough and efficient system of common schools throughout the state. That's Derawf. But no religious or other sect or sects shall ever have any exclusive right to or control of any part of the school funds of this state. That is the Ohio Constitution, hold the fog. The second thing I want to posit with you is that we're all in the middle of a fight. And for public education, I don't think I have to tell you, this is the fight of our lives. I have never seen it the way it is today in the state of Ohio. But in order to win the fight, you have to show up for the fight. And that's what I'm here to ask you to do tonight. I'm here to recruit you for at least this part of the fight. So let's look at Amherst's loss to Ed Choice vouchers. Because my, I want to, want to, there are a lot of things out there. I'd like to focus tonight basically on Ed Choice vouchers. So in fiscal year 2021, which is the first year of Ed Choice voucher expansion, 37 of your students took the vouchers and left your district. Fiscal year 22, it was up to 50. Fiscal year 23, it was 57. Fiscal year 24, it's 235. So what does that mean to you? There it is. $1,295,320 of your taxpayer money walked out of this district to voucher private schools, probably religious, probably not accredited, and probably not doing very well for your students. Okay, now the, what the state likes to tell people about these vouchers is that, well, it's just a way to get these poor kids from impoverished areas out of failing public schools. And we're not failing schools, but that's what they say. But in Ohio, we have found that that is not necessarily what reality is. So who is actually getting these vouchers? Well, in fiscal year 2023... Well, in fiscal year 2023, you had 40 students who were low-income qualified that got them and 17 who are not low-income qualified. Now you notice there was a big jump in fiscal year 24, both in the last slide and this slide. And that's because of the expansion that we saw that came from the legislature. But look what also happened. Now, 199 who are not low-income students versus 24 who are. So when they tell you that this is about low-income kids who need to be rescued from these failing schools, you can point out that 84.7% of the vouchers in this district went to students who are not low-income. Let's go to the other, the other side. These, these are the slides that, this, I'm lifting these from what Steve Dyer showed at the Capitol Conference. I think you've seen these, actually. His slides are much prettier than mine and he does a really good job. So that's it. Okay, so this is historically what has happened since 1996. Ohio has a number of different vouchers. I think there are five types. And most of them are very small and very targeted. Again, it's the Ed Choice expansion that is the problem. But look at what has happened between 1996 and 2025. It's just that curve has just risen to over a billion dollars. So it started out very, very tiny, basically in the Cleveland School District. And just, it is now over a billion dollars. This year, in this next budget, they're talking about $2 billion. So that's the historic. This is what is happening. Ohio's K through 12 state revenue going to public schools, as steep as the curve is up, the funding from the state going to K through 12 public school districts is going down. It is only 79.3% of what it was 20 years ago. So there we go. So Ohio's public school children are 84% of all Ohio's school children. Ohio's public school children receive only 79.4% though of all K through 12 spending. So in Ohio, we're starting to tip the scales in the wrong direction. This is, this is 1997 to 2024 private school enrollment versus state voucher investment. And just look at the difference in those red lines especially. Voucher schools, students perform worse than our students. You all know that, Republicans know that. The other myth that's out there is that this is rescuing non-white students. Well, except that it's not. Most of the vouchers, the Ed Choice expansion in Ohio, you know, are going to white students. And on the expansion, you see that that number is actually 81.6%. This is just school districts that have, that have increased segregation. Actually, that's, I'm done with these slides now, switching back. Okay. So here's, when we look at the fight, and we look at what's happening in Columbus now, Ed Choice vouchers are going to continue to expand. We are, you've seen. Right, you've seen the terrific expansion. And this year, when we start getting into the budget, they're already talking about basically doubling what is already going through the roof. I don't think it's any secret to anybody in here that our former Senate President, now Speaker of the House, is, you know, his whole mission for being a legislator in Ohio was to privatize the schools. And he, he doesn't hide it. He went to the American Legislative Exchange Committee Conference and talked about it, that that was his mission. And, and in the, you know, in the press, he has made a lot of statements to that effect. There is no counterbalance to stop him in the Senate anymore. And when he was the Senate President, we used to have a House of Representatives that wasn't quite of that mind. There was a balance there, but that balance is gone this year. So vouchers are going to be increased. And we all know that they are not going to fund the fair school funding plan to the extent that they, that they should. The money comes from the same pot. So the money that's going to the voucher kids first is money that is not coming to public school districts. That's, that's another myth. The state likes to say, well, there's a different pot of money. But there's not really. It is all the same line item, that the vouchers get paid first. So the fight is, what do you do about this? Well, you sue the state because you have the Ohio Constitution to stand on, which is very clear about this. And you have a, a good case. And that's what we did. When we formed this Council of Governments, it was actually during, during COVID. You know how some people learned how to bake sourdough bread during COVID? Well, Bill and I and a few others, we organized this Council of Governments to sue the state over COVID. And it has come together quite nicely. And it's, it's all under the umbrella of the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy. The same group, same structure that did the Deroff cases. But the campaign is called Vouchers for Ohio. The campaign has two, two sides. It has the legal side and it has the, the public engagement side. The legal side is the side that is responsible for suing the state of Ohio. And I'm gonna talk about where that suit is in a second. The, the public engagement side, side is run by Dennis Willard, who is a professional in communications. And we are going to change the culture in the state of Ohio. And it's not as hard as you might think. Because when people hear this, they're like, say what? Our taxes are doing what? We've been to fairs all over the state. We, you know, people don't like this. The problem is they don't necessarily know about it. It's not like we have good news media that actually covers this. So people don't really know how bad this situation is. So it is our job on the public engagement side of this to tell people so that when it gets to the Ohio Supreme Court in a few years, the public will be sold on getting rid of Ed Choice vouchers. It is the legal side that is responsible for getting it through the courts. Now, next month, the 28th, starts the final pre-trial hearing before Judge Page in Franklin County. Once that is finished and she rules on the pre-trial motions, the case can be scheduled for trial in Franklin County. It was actually supposed to happen last November, but she wasn't ready. So do what the judge says. We have won every substantive pre-trial motion so far. So we are, you know, we are somewhat encouraged. You never know until it's over. But, you know, if you, if you score them, we're winning. There's only one that we lost and it was really esoteric and didn't really make any difference. It is the Coalition and the Columbus City Schools is the lead plaintiff. The, the second plaintiff is Cleveland Heights University Heights. And there are some individuals as well. And the, um, okay, so, so the, the, okay, the trial was supposed to be in November. It's not. It will be sometime the third quarter or the fourth quarter of this year, once, once those are ruled on. It'll then get appealed. Whoever loses will appeal and it will eventually make its way to the Ohio Supreme Court. Now, what's nice about this case is that unlike Deroff, where the, the Supreme Court ordered the state legislature to do something to fix, that the legislature just, of course, ignored, this case just calls for Ed Choice vouchers to be declared unconstitutional, which shouldn't be very difficult to do because they are. You saw the Constitution. And then, and then once that happens, then the state would be ordered by the court just to stop. There's no going back and fixing. There'd be no delays. It'd be just, the vouchers would happen. So let me go to the next slide. Okay, there are five counts. Just basically gonna go through them. Count one is a declaratory judgment, creation of one or more systems of uncommon schools in violation of the Ohio Constitution, which you saw. Count two is for declaratory judgment, failure to secure a thorough and efficient system of common schools in violation of the Ohio Constitution. Count three is segregation, and that's the racial component, in violation of the thorough and efficient system of common schools as provided in Article Six, Section Two. Count four is diversion of funding in violation of the no religious or other sect shall ever have exclusive right in the Constitution. And you'll notice this is a different section. This is, the fifth count is the all-power is inherent in people's laws. But those are the five counts. I, I can provide the entire complaint to you, should you like to have it. And I'd like to just open it up for questions now because I know that when we, when we talk about this, unless, unless there's something I forgot, Bill.
Well, if I could interject here for just a moment. As, as Eric indicated, I, I was the executive director of the Coalition when the Deroff case was going through the courts and decided. I had just left the State Department of Education as Assistant Superintendent of Public Instruction. And I was, one of, my job was to be the liaison between the Department of Education and the General Assembly. And after 16 years with the department, I could see that the legislature wasn't going to do anything substantive with regard to the decrepit school facilities and, and the, the funding system. So I dropped out of the State Department of Education and started working with the Coalition. Now, we, we were very successful in the, in the Deroff case. In fact, there are 1,200 new school buildings across the state that wouldn't have been here if it hadn't not been for the accord, the Supreme Court ruling that the system is unconstitutional. Now, when Eric got in touch with me, Eric Resnick got in touch with me, and, and he's the one that, he's the one person that kind of started this whole litigation effort. But he got in touch with me, the Coalition was in existence. It was the Council of Governments, you know, that was sworn in 1991. And we decided, that is, the Steering Committee of the Coalition decided to pursue this litigation. We have, the Steering Committee now, as it's kind of been reconstituted, is comprised of 29 members. They're all either superdeness treasures, board members, or former board members. But all of them have a record in, in being in, in public education. So right now, we, we started out with just the three or four districts. Right now, since the fiscal year 21, we have gone from just a few districts to 300 districts. That is, 300 districts have contributed to this litigation effort since fiscal year 21. Some of them five years, some of them four years, some of them three years, some of them two years. And then we have, this year, in fiscal year 25, we've, we have 24 or 25 new districts. And so, so the 300 districts have so far contributed to this, this effort. And, and we're growing every day. We've got, you know, we've got rural districts, suburban districts, urban districts. In fact, all of the urban districts except Cleveland are involved. And in terms of pupil population, we have more than half. Those districts in the Coalition represent more than half of the pupil population because we have these larger districts in. Recent, recently, we've gotten some suburban districts in like Upper Arlington, in, in Columbus area. We, we've got Wyoming and Hamilton County and Butler County. We, we just recently got the Lakota School District in. So this is, I mean, this is a kind of a, we have an all-star Steering Committee. We have districts that are 300 districts and they're joining, you know, on a regular basis. They're, you know, they're rural districts in character, urban, small town, suburban, joint vocational school districts, educational service centers. So we're, we, this is, you know, this is just a, a very legitimate operation in some, some respects, a prestigious operation. And we, we fully expect that we're going to demonstrate to the court that we in fact, that, that the vouchers, that Ed Choice voucher program is unconstitutional. We're only, there are five voucher programs in Ohio. We're only challenging the Ed Choice vouchers. You know, the John Peterson Scholarship was not involved, the Autism Scholarship, the Cleveland Scholarship. Those, those, those voucher programs are not, not involved in this. So, you know, and I, I might say also, well, I will say also that, you know, you would have thought, or I would have thought, that once they got the universal voucher program in place, that they'd quit, that, that no more expansion. Well, now the President, or the Speaker of the House wants to get the facility money from the state to increase the, you know, facilities, expand facilities for private schools and thus increase the demand for voucher, for, for vouchers. There's a bill going through the legislature now that they, they call the Education Savings Accounts. And, and they're, they're wanting to get these Education Savings Accounts to funnel money directly to parents who then can use their, their money to pay the tuition of those non-chartered, non-tax schools. Those, those private schools that have absolutely no regulation from the state of Ohio. And of course, the, the chartered non-public schools are, you know, they're somewhat regulated, but not to the, obviously not to the extent that the public system is. You know, the private schools are not audited. Every penny that goes to a district is audited, as you well know. So the bottom line of all of this is that, as Eric said before, we're, we're kind of in a fight for the, the public, the public school system, the public common school system, the one that was authorized by the General Assembly. So I'd be happy to answer questions or, or just depending on what you're interested in.
As, as I started out by saying, we are here to recruit you. As, as I started out by saying, we are here to recruit you. And we, uh, we are, we are hoping that by the time this litigation gets going full steam, that, um, we are, that we have at least 80% of the school districts in the state of Ohio onboard, so that we can walk into the court and say, you know, this is, this is a big group. This represents a lot of people. This is solidarity. We know that the Ohio Supreme Court is now a very political entity, because they openly admit that not too. This is how you win in an openly political entity, is you walk in with strength. And the other thing I want to say is that this is good for your community because your local taxpayers are gonna be on the hook. Every penny that you need, that you don't get from the state of Ohio, you're gonna have to go back to your local tax base and you're gonna have to ask for it while they're, while the state is diverting that money to these private schools. And at some point, your voters are gonna figure that out and they're gonna say, well, what did you do to stop this? This is what you do to stop this. You join this campaign. And we are here to recruit you and to answer your questions. And by the way, Bill gives me far more credit for this project than I deserve. I ran my mouth, which attracted some attention, but Bill is the driving force behind this. And there are a lot of people on the Steering Committee that are extremely talented and knew what to do when that ball landed in their court. And that's why we're here and that's why we've had the success that, that we have had so far. So, at that, I'd like to just hear your questions and make sure that between tonight and what I do afterwards, in terms of sending you stuff, that you have everything that you need to come back and say, yes, Amherst wants to join.
Questions for the presentation. Amanda, you have anything that you would like to add or any, and you'd like to say?
Oh, just thank you for, um, making sure that you're coming out and thank you for, you know, everybody agreeing to have him out and hopefully, um, our district community was able to tune in and, you know, hear the presentation or, you know, able to come back and tune in later on YouTube, so.
Or just gonna be on YouTube.
On our official channel, yes. People can understand, you know, what's going on and how it affects your tax, you know, harder tax dollars, just obviously.
You know, at, at some point, we, we don't really have a choice. This is not a legislature that is lobbying them anymore. And they've proven that over and over again. If you're gonna fight, there's only one avenue. This is it.
Your question, Mr. Zappa?
I'm confused on the Ed Choice. I understand what it is. Um, the tax dollars in this district go wherever the student goes, correct?
Uh, yes and no. I, I, you're, you're, yeah, I, yeah, I would say that that's basically true. Would you agree with that, Bill? Would you agree with that, Trevor?
The funding, the funding follows the student, yes.
It follows the student, yeah. Almost 100% now, right?
So, what this is essentially is that public, dollars for public schools are being diverted to students going to private schools. So, it's taking money away from the state's general fund that they would otherwise hopefully give to public education.
And those students can go anywhere?
Well, you have, I forgot to put the slide up there, but in Lorain County, you have 16 schools that will take vouchers today. 16 in, with Lorain County.
Okay, well, where I was going with that was there's a school in Lorain County that appropriate school. And it was stated in, in the bulletin there that if you live in a certain city, you can come here for free. Okay, so what, I, I guess, there's where I'm confused is, so, from Ed Choice perspective, can you, can you go to that school outside of that city to Ed Choice?
Oh, yeah.
So, so where's it free and not free?
You can take, you, if, if you qualify for an Ed Choice voucher, and almost everybody now qualifies for it, very rare to find somebody that's not gonna qualify for an Ed Choice voucher. That's the problem. But you can take that Ed Choice voucher to any school that would accept them. So, that, yes, that's, that is the case. Any school. It could be anywhere. It doesn't have to be local.
So, when they say free, the schools, that's free, is there a, is there like an equalizer where we'll, we'll take this money, but we need more than you have to pay? Or both, they, they sat, they're satisfied with whatever they get?
Well, different schools operate differently. For example, the Catholic Diocese schools have funding other than the vouchers, but they take the vouchers. And, and the vouchers go into, you know, their operating funds and it becomes like a slush fund for them. But they have, you know, they have other funding mechanisms as well, endowments and donors and stuff like that. Um, other private schools that are more independent would have their own business model.
So, do all of the Catholic schools in Ohio, or in Northeast Ohio, accept the voucher?
No, but there are very few that don't. I know of a couple that don't, but it is very few, most.
But the ones in Lorain County and Cuyahoga County probably do.
Yes.
I think that may help answer your question.
And Eric, when they, when they increased the amount of money going to vouchers, which you saw the expansion, how many students in Amherst now are taking vouchers somewhere? There was nothing stopping those school districts from raising their tuition in response, correct?
Correct. And, and in fact, that is a, that is a point that has come out in the deposition, that these schools that take the vouchers, they're not, you know, they're just raising their tuition, you know? So, so they, they have this extra voucher money, you know, so that allows them to just raise their price because they can with the vouchers. It's easier. It's not, you know, if the, if, if the vouchers went away, you know, they wouldn't necessarily go away, they just would have to lower their prices back down. And, and that was one of the interesting things that's come out in the deposition so far.
And would it be a fair statement to say that some of those parochial schools or Catholic schools are in the process of not showing up front, but recruiting some of those students, not necessarily from an academic standpoint, but from a competition standpoint?
Yes. Without a doubt.
Correct. So, that, that's something I think that as we think about this, we need to keep that in mind, that, uh, all of the best athletes are going to be a target, in my opinion, strictly my opinion, uh, for a target, for them to recruit them because they will take the amount of money that that voucher is. And just like he said, the athletic groups are so strong, there's a donor who will pay the difference or has a fund set up that will accommodate any additional money that is needed to attend that institution.
So, you're saying that they go to Catholic school and let's just say it's $5,000, it's $5,000 to go to Catholic school. If they decide to take the voucher there, they would, the school would get the voucher, but they would still have to possibly pay the money to go to Catholic school?
Well, they would have to pay that, but if they're coming, if they're being recruited, not on academics, and even if they're being recruited on academics, there's probably a fund that would help support that. Think about it. Think about what we heard at the board retreat last year. That presenter worked for a private institution. He flat out told us that the key to their success was recruitment and that they would come up with the means of the funds to get the people they would want. And because we had a discussion around that in regards to sports. So, I just think that we all need to keep in mind that it's not only going to hurt the educational component, but it's also going to hurt the athletic component, the extracurricular component of schools. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that, that, and, and in some cases, it may be, the parent may think that, gee, if X school doesn't have a good program in soccer, but a school does, then why are we not going to send them where they think that they're going to get a better education, not necessarily, but a better opportunity to play soccer? Because the benefits of getting accepted to play soccer at a different school, because sometimes, you know, that the recruiting of those athletes are better than they are at public school. So, I just, there's a lot for you to think about in that. Uh, and I know we've talked about some of that stuff at the board, but I just think it's important that we keep that in mind.
On, on the academic side, is there anything at the state level in place to start monitoring or grading?
No. No. In fact, that's, you know, that, that, that's the joke around the state of Ohio.
And that's what the people know.
Is it, is it, you know, these, these non-public schools are like the Wild West, literally. And, and in fact, you know, Ohio is known for being the Wild West of non-public schools. They, they do whatever they want. They, they are not, they are not held to any real standard at all, which is one of the reasons why they don't perform as well as we do.
And also, real quick, as everyone knows, we, we transport students not to our school district at our cost, which is another issue that I think we've talked to legislators about, legislators about, like, again, if you're gonna give them funding, then give them funding transportation too, but get it off of our books, so we're not paying for that, right? We're the only state in the country that has pu- public school districts transported at our, our, our time for, for private, private schools.
And it's not just paying for it. You have to meet their schedule or you have to meet your own. You know, when, you know, that was one of the issues that we wrestled with in Canton a couple of years ago when we, when we redid our, our transportation, was our non-public said, no, we want your transportation here at this time. And we, the public school district, the owner of the buses, have to schedule our transportation around them. But that's what the state law is in Ohio. Ohio is crazy. And it's because, you know, our legislature, you know.
It's villainizing public education.
And, and doing it because they, they don't even hide it anymore. They want public school districts to go away. They don't hide that anymore. And, and, you know, and once again, you know, you're, the, the cost to join the campaign is $2 per student per year. That's it. You've lost over 1.2 million this year already. $2 per student. That's it. And, you know, when, when your, when your public comes to you and says, well, how can you justify this? You know, talk about what's coming if, if these vouchers continue to grow.
We've, we've been talking about it in terms of the, the new biennial bill for '26, '27 and what's happening, the potential loss over two years of 1.3 million. And the state's share of our total revenue is shrinking. Um, it was 41.4 whatever. It's down below 40. And by the end of the biennial budget, if the House bill version comes to fruition, it would be under 30%. So, we just keep losing.
Yeah. As does almost every district in Ohio. So, that means, you know, that means that the state really wants everybody to go back to pre-Deraulph, where it was all property tax, you know? Eventually, you know, you're gonna look at a building like this and say, we can't afford to keep the lights on here unless we go back to the public for more mil, mileage. And that's terrible. You know, but that's, you know, that's where we are.
Any other question? So, just to put it in perspective, the cost if we choose to join this would be under 110,000. It's a bargain. Is that correct?
Well, it's $2 per student per year and we have 3,700 students.
So, it's under 110,000. So, rounded to about 110,000.
Under 8,000.
Under 8,000, okay, under 8,000. I'm sorry.
Which is under 110,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter. I'm like waiting now.
There's also a resolution in the board, but do, correct that?
And I can send you that. I can, I can send that to you very easily. That is actually on the website. There's one more thing that I want to invite you to. That is, April 4th in Columbus, the Network for Public Education, that's Diane Ravitch's group, is having their national conference in Columbus, Ohio, in part because of the work that we're, you know, Columbus was chosen because of the work that we are doing suing the state. Diane Ravitch will be there. I think, I heard that Tim Walz is gonna give the keynote address. Our project has two sessions and I will send you the link to that as well. It'd be great to have, uh, a bunch of people down there from Amherst. So, you have my email address, you have my phone. Anything that happens, let me know. Let's continue the conversation and get it done. And again, I, I thank you for the invitation to come to, uh, Amherst and, um, and your patience. And, uh, and I'm sure Bill joins me in that, so, thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Actually, you can give it to Madam, please.
Yes, thank you, sir.
I'll go back up to you.
All right. So, this evening, I am presenting the district profile, um, from fiscal '24. Um, I do better presenting standing up, so I'm going to come out of the camera if you just wanna train the camera on the screen. That would be my preference. Um, so, the district profiles, um, if, I, I know that I presented before. I haven't, I haven't presented since fiscal '21, or actually, I presented fiscal '21 profiles in fiscal '22. To refresh your memories about what, um, I'll come back to this, guys. To refresh your memory about what the district profiles are, it's, it's also called the Cup Report. And that was Senator and Speaker Bob Cupp encouraged the, um, collection of data that makes public school districts in the state more easily compared to one another. Um, for fiscal '24, there's 58 data elements in prior years, there were more. I will get back to that later. Uh, but one of the things that they have eliminated from the district profiles in fiscal 20, 24 is the ODE funding per pupil. I wonder why, Mr. Resnick?
Yes, because there is no more ODE.
Well, there's no ODE, but we don't want to advertise the fact that we're giving, that they're giving us less money per pupil, right? So, the data elements, um, this year are for 606 traditional districts. There are 608 public school districts in the state. Two were eliminated from this because they're so different than the rest, and that's the island districts and college something or other. Um, I, I can't remember the name of the other district. But the elements are demographic, and that is how many students we have, the district square miles, um, the racial identities and percentages of such. We have personnel and that information mostly is about teaching professionals and administrative staff. There is wage information. There are pupil to admin, pupil to teacher ratios, et cetera. There's property valuation and tax, local effort, operating expenditure per pupil, revenue by sources, and district financing. by sources, and district financial. And it's collected from a number of different sources. It's collected from taxation, Department of Taxation, it's federal taxation, it's District EMIS, it's the five-year forecast, it's the district report card, it's the funding statement, SFPR. There are many different sources of this information. For this evening, what I wanted to concentrate solely on was Lorraine County because it's what we see and what we know. There are 14 public school districts in Lorraine County that we compare against. On most of these graphs are vertical bar charts, and on the left margin, it's alphabetical, so Amherst is on the left margin, it is green, and on the right margin, we have the statewide averages, which is yellow. Everything else is gray, so I really want you to, I mean, pay close attention to where Amherst and the state fall in all of these graphs. So let's move right into the pictures. Exhibit one is enrolled ADM. Forgive me, there is a lot of information here, so if I'm referring to my notes to the narrative, it's not that I don't know it, it's just that there's a lot to share with you this evening. So enrolled ADM, we currently have last fiscal year 3,494 students. We are the sixth largest in the county. We're considered a medium-sized district. Of the 606 traditional public schools, 196 are larger than Amherst, and the statewide average enrollment is 2375. Exhibit two is teachers' experience, and this is one of my favorite data elements to present because it shows that Amherst teachers have greater experience than other districts in our county and also compared to the statewide averages. Our average teacher experience, 72% of our teachers have 10 or more years of experience. And back in fiscal '21, Amherst had the greatest percentage of teachers with at least 10 years experience. That's changed a little bit. That also tells a story. That's what's so important about what we're doing tonight, is that this continues to tell a story about the district. We have had considerable retirements in the last few years. And so as your more senior teachers retire and they're replaced with freshman teachers, you know, newbies, neophytes, whatever you want to call them, the average percentage of teachers with greater than 10 years of experience is going to shrink, and our teachers with 0 to 4 experience is going to grow. The next picture, this shows just Amherst. See the legend down below, the blue, our teachers with 0 to 4 experience, 0 to 4 years. Orange is teachers with 4 to 10, and green, the 72.1% select, are teachers with at least 10 years of experience. So nearly three-quarters of our teachers have greater than 10 years' experience. Exhibit four is the classroom teacher's average annual salary. You're gonna see another one that looks very similar. Next slide. Here, we just want to compare the county. Amherst's average salary is, I think I took the metric out, $76,703. And the statewide average is $68,224. So you'll see, like Avon Lake has a higher wage, average wage for teaching professionals, and so does Lorraine City, but you see the county is pretty closely clustered. So exhibit five, what is really important here, the graph gets busy because we have two y axes. On the left, we have the average teacher salary, and on the right, we have the percentage of teachers with at least 10 years' experience. So the orange line is the experience, and the vertical charts, the vertical bars, rather, are the teacher's average salary. So what I really want you to take home and remember about exhibit five is that although we have the second-largest percentage of teachers with greater than 10 years' experience, our teacher average salary is greater than the state by over $8,000. But we also have teachers, 79% of our teachers hold at least a master's degree. So any of you understand how a teacher's negotiated salary schedule goes? It's education along the top, and down the rows are years of experience. So our teachers, I like to say, if you were, look at a square, our teacher, you know, most of them are kind of clustered down in the lower right quadrant, which is a lot of education and quite a few years of experience. So exhibit six here then, we have the administrator's average annual salary. Amherst has the fourth-highest average annual salary for administrators in Lorraine County, and it also exceeds the state by almost $12,000. The average annual salary is higher in 141 districts in the state, so almost 25% of the state districts in the state have a higher average annual administrator salary than what Amherst does. Within Lorraine County and statewide, the pupil-to-administrator ratio is considerably lower. So the orange line, so under Amherst, the pupil-to-administrator ratio in Amherst is 171.86 pupils per single administrator. In the state, that is considerably, considerably lower number of pupils per administrator, you can see over here. Keystone local has a higher pupil-to-administrator ratio than us, but you can tell that's a complete aberration from what is common in Lorraine County and in the state. Exhibit seven is the administration expenditure per pupil, and I think what is really important here is that Amherst's administrative expenditure per pupil is only $1,320. It's the lowest in the county, obvious up there. The statewide average is 2,208, and only 10 districts in the state experience a lower administrative expenditure per pupil. Comparatively, 548 districts in the state have a lower pupil-to-administrator ratio. And what's this, what's this piece of the story at Amherst is that Amherst runs lean administrative operations. That's what I need you all, you all to be hearing this evening. Now, we're gonna talk about funding. We're gonna be talking about local funding. Exhibit eight is the total property tax per pupil, and our total property tax per pupil collected in Amherst is $6,362, whereas the state average is $7,738 per pupil. And I'm gonna read some, some stuff here. So the statewide average is $7,738 per pupil, and Amherst is $6,362. Of the 606 public school districts in the state, 304 districts collect greater local revenue than Amherst EVSD. Comparatively, 248 districts in the state collected greater total property tax per pupil in fiscal '21, so I'm looking at last year to three years ago. This has changed, more operating levies in the state, and increases in assessed valuation. Assessed valuation is what Lorraine County just completed last year, last calendar year, tax year '24. So assessed valuations have been growing. So we see definitely growth in revenue per pupil throughout the state, but not so much in the district. Exhibit nine is assessed valuation per pupil, and I just want to review what assessed valuation is. Assessed value on real estate is set at 35% of market value by the state of Ohio. This is legislated. Assessed value is the value of taxable property to which the tax rate is applied to compute the property tax obligation for each property owner. So in exhibit nine, the assessed valuation per pupil, so that is tax year, it would have been tax year '23, this is not updated with '24 numbers yet, the total assessed valuation of $728 million divided by the 3,494 pupils gives you $208,465 AV per pupil. The state average is $269,000 AV per pupil. And what is further interesting about this, in fiscal '21, the assessed valuation per pupil was $184,000. 184,385, you'll see that in your executive summary, compared to a statewide average of $165,751 per pupil. So a huge shift occurred with many counties completing this ex-annual reappraisal. The statewide total assessed valuation per pupil being $269,000 in 2024, that is a tremendous amount of statewide average growth AV per pupil. Another data element in the district profile equates that assessed valuation to the district student revenue raised by 1 mil of property tax. What I want to point out here is a mil is a 1,000. So take $208,000 divided by 1,000, and you get $208 raised by 1 mil in Amherst, okay? Everybody with me so far? I know it's a lot. It took me a lot longer to write it than it did for me to present it. Exhibit 10, you've heard us talk about class one, real estate, and class two, real estate. Class one is residential agriculture. Class two is commercial, industrial, et cetera. In Amherst, green on the left, nearly 80% of our valuation comes from residential and agricultural properties. The average in the state is 75.8. See a couple of districts, Columbia and North Bridgeville. Obviously, North Bridgeville is booming in residential real estate, and Columbia is rural, so it has a high valuation of agricultural. This just talks about the district's ability to raise local revenue from either class one or class two. Less than 20% of our local revenue comes from commercial and industrial. We're kind of landlocked, right? There's little opportunity to grow commercial and industrial. Exhibit 11 then is state revenue per pupil. This illustrates the state revenue per pupil from all state sources. The gray vertical bar represents fiscal '24, so all of the districts are in gray except Amherst and the statewide average. Back in 2021, the state revenue, total state revenue per pupil, which include unrestricted funding, restricted funding, so that would be our regular foundation revenue, our casino revenue, which is not foundation revenue, unrestricted funding, and that's DPIA, it's I'm drawing a blank. On the top part of the foundation statement is wellness funding is restricted, our career tech funding is restricted, economic disadvantage, all of those are restricted funding. And then another thing is homestead and rollback. What is credited from the property owner's income tax, which is paid by the state, is also included in the state revenue per pupil. So in fiscal '21, we collected $5,097 per pupil. What are we collecting in fiscal '24? $4,754. Look at the other end, the state. There is more funding in fiscal '24 per pupil than there was in fiscal '21. So what's happening in Amherst is the converse of what's happening at the state. So comparatively, where the state revenue per pupil diminished for Amherst, the statewide average per pupil increased $864 from '21 to '24. And here's my, my opinion, but it's also obvious from the graphs. Although the Fair School Funding Plan has its merits, it has not generated a windfall for Amherst. Some districts have generated additional funding. Amherst has not. You'll see further down in the additional pictures I've provided this evening, more and more is falling on the local taxpayer here. Exhibit 12 is total revenue per pupil. This graph illustrates the total tax revenue plus state funding collected and any other source of revenue per student. Amherst, Amherst has the lowest revenue per pupil at $12,277 in Lorraine County, whereas the statewide average is almost 50% more at $18,168. And here's where I really want you to pay attention. Only one district, only one district in the state of Ohio collects less revenue per pupil than Amherst Exempted Village School District. One district in the state of Ohio collects less revenue per pupil than Amherst Exempted Village Schools. I was astounded when I, when I sorted all of the data, the 606 schools, and saw that metric. I was, I was really surprised. The districts in the statewide average total revenue per pupil in fiscal '21, it was $11,960 and $16,155 respectively. Whereas the statewide average total revenue per pupil increased over 12%, Amherst grew only 2%. So these are where we start to tell a story about our district, and sometimes diving into the data can be tedious and boring for some. It really does tell a story about the district. So our total expenditures per pupil, this is something else that the district can be proud of. This graph illustrates the total dollars each district spends per pupil. Amherst spent the second-lowest total expenditure per pupil in fiscal '24. In fiscal '21, Amherst spent the least amount. In 2018 and '19, it spent the fourth-lowest, and finally, the sixth-lowest expenditures in 2017. So as other districts in our county are really increasing their expenditures per pupil, we are controlling, you can say we are controlling it a bit better. The statewide average expenditure per pupil is 16,311 on the right in yellow, and it's over $3,700 more per pupil than Amherst. Only 36 districts in the state spend less per pupil compared to only 19 districts in fiscal '21. So we are, we are controlling our expenditures. Where our revenue is actually decreasing per pupil, our expenditures, yes, are increasing for, you know, per pupil. You can see right here, $12,584 expenditure per pupil, $12,277 revenue per pupil. You can see right here, we're deficit spending. We are deficit spending, but we're controlling it. We're holding it together, but we are depleting cash resources as well. Exhibit 14 here is the district federal average income, and this is tax year '22. Currently, our district's average federal income, this comes from the federal tax returns, 1040s, $71,963, and the statewide average is $75,823. This is pretty interesting. For tax year 2020, Amherst residents' average income was $64,729, and the statewide average was $87,221. Average income in the state has decreased in the last couple of years where Amherst grew. These metrics compared to recent past shows that Lorraine County has gained comparative wealth. Another issue with the Fair School Funding Plan.
You've got less state matching money?
Yes. Everyone looks like they're still awake. This is good, it's good. Exhibit 15 is revenue category as a percentage of the total for last fiscal year. Our local revenue accounts for 43.1%. In the blue, our state revenue is 38.7%. You heard me tell Mr. Resnick earlier that our state revenue used to be over 41%. It's shrinking to 38% last year, and if the House bill version of the biennial bill for fiscal '26 and '27 comes true, state funding will drop to less than 30% as a percentage of the whole for Amherst. Exhibit 16 here, we have expenditures. Exhibit 16 here, we have expenditures as a percentage of total. 59.6% is salaries in orange, 22, I believe, 22.1% for fringe benefits. Purchase services is gray, supplies and material is yellow, and other is blue. Other would include transfers and advances out to other funds. It would include any miscellaneous charges like, such as we pay the county to collect taxes and send them to us. And it also includes banking charges and miscellaneous charges and such. I think what is important to mention here is that it's pretty close generally to what the statewide averages are. Our salaries are a little bit higher than the statewide average by, I think, 3%. But some of the other categories are less. They kind of weigh each other out. And then the final slide I'm going to share with you this evening is the total personnel costs per district in Lorraine County versus the statewide average. On the right, you see the statewide average salary and benefits account for 78.7% of the total expenditures. And in Amherst, last year, they accounted for 81.7%. You see, it's pretty closely matched throughout Lorraine County. Again, it does exceed the statewide average, but as was what the state was experiencing over the course of the last three to five years was increased salaries and benefits. Healthcare inflation exceeds inflation, Consumer Price Index. It normally outpaces it by quite a bit. And of course, the salaries are more to do with negotiated changes and level of staffing. And we are not a decreasing district. Our enrollment is not decreasing. So we don't have a situation like they did in the district 12, 13 years ago where we had declining enrollment, rapidly declining enrollment. So as professional staff retired, we could not replace them. It's called attrition. We could save money through attrition. But we are not decreasing in enrollment. We are actually, it looks even. Mr. Molinar, you can speak to this more eloquently than I can. It looks like enrollment is staying even, but what has been eliminated is open enrollment. So we're growing slowly, but we eliminated the open enrollment. So where we had open enrollment students are being replaced with district students. So that's a good thing. But we, our district's right-sized. And I think that is something that you can't really look at this graph and believe, but we are right-sized. We have no ability to eliminate any sizable FTEs in the district staff. So this is also known as the CUP report. It is a wealth of information for internal use and comparison purposes. It really tells a story about the district. There are many more data elements to explore. We're not going to do that this evening. There's a collective sigh up there. There are many uses of the district profiles data, and it does tell a story about our district. And what I'm saying is let's get out there and tell a story about our district before somebody else makes up a different narrative. And I think this was the start this evening. What can we say about Amherst? We're strong. We're pretty amazing. We have a phenomenal professional staff, admin and support staff. We offer many varied and progressive opportunities. We make prudent use of financial resources. I think you saw some data elements that really spoke to that this evening. And we have truly engaged families and strong community support. Look what we had here this evening. I mean, we had a wonderful showing of NORD families and parents and students and all of the wonderful things that aren't just curricular, right? That are going on in our schools. And I think this all speaks to Amherst's new vision. Amherst Exempted Village Schools, a community of excellence. Okay. So what I skipped on the very first slide was an update for the treasurer's office. You don't need to go back to that, Mrs. Walker. Okay. But what's going on in the treasurer's office is cross-training continues among the four positions. And we are conducting second interviews this week for the payroll position. We had one this afternoon for the board meeting, and we have two more candidates tomorrow. I would fully expect us collectively to make a decision. The second round is comprised of Mr. Molinar, Mr. O'Dell, he left. Christine Ryder in HR, Sarah Trigo, benefits, within my office, and myself. We would expect to make a decision and make an offer by the end of this week. We expect the board to approve this at the April 21st board meeting with the start date to coincide. And that gives plenty of time for the candidate to make notice to their current employer and all of that. So are there any questions about either the profiles I presented this evening or the update for the office? Or for the, yeah, for the office?
I can say, I appreciate all the graphs. I think that really tells a story, like you said. So thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So you said there was one district, I guess, that had less.
Less total revenue per pupil in one district in the state. So of the 606 districts in the profiles, one district collected less total revenue per pupil than Amherst. And that was Springborough, and I believe it's Warren County? Is that Springborough?
I have to go by date.
Yes, by date, okay.
By date.
Springborough is by date.
Just one.
We don't need to find out that I have the needs of working.
I have a question. Yeah, was the...
I have no idea. Truthfully, when I looked at that data element, I just sorted from least to greatest and saw that one district collected less. I did not dig further into look and see what their state funding was or what their local revenue was or anything like that. I didn't look at their local tax effort. There's so much I could have dug into tonight, but I spared you all. So another night.
Any other questions for the treasurer? If not, we would take your recommendations.
All right. Pretty easy this evening. Nothing that you're not used to seeing. We have the February regular board meeting minutes for approval. We have February's financials. There's supposed to be 8A, B, C, and D. We have a little bit of mix-up right there. And that is the financial reconciliation, the financial summary by Fund and Special Cost Center. We have the forecast reports for General Fund and Emergency Levy Fund. And we have the accounts payable checks and ACHs issued for the month of February. Those are the normal financial exhibits you're used to seeing. In 8C, we have what I put at your places, which is any appropriations changes. We have, you go to the next slide, please, Mrs. Walker. We have the OO4 Building Fund for the tax anticipation note issued that we did, just to make sure that we have the $2.5 million increase appropriations there to be used. NORD Principles Fund is increasing because they received a GPE Foundation Grant. The Orchestra Fund, Orchestra Student Activity is going to see your point, I believe. So they're paying their own way, they're buying t-shirts. So additional revenue, additional expenditures. The NORD Choir Account has a budget purpose and goals, a purpose and goals statement changed, but not a budget change. And then Comets Live had an increase of about $14,000, if I recall. Yes. And then we have one then and now invoice. And then we have multiple donations for you all to acknowledge this evening.
We have a motion on the floor for items under 8A through E. We need a second, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion or comments or questions for the treasurer? Hearing or seeing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will go to item 10. Mrs. Walker.
Mrs. Walker. I just have two quick things that I want to share with everyone. If you haven't already registered for the Best Buddies Walk, it is on May 3rd. I know Chandler and her crew mentioned that during the NORD presentation. This year, it will be at the Metro Park Zoo. And so registration for the walk happens before the zoo opens, then you have the rest of the area that you can enjoy with them too. And then the other thing is they saved the date for our, what is now Annual Summer Activity Fair that will be on April 30th at Powers from 5 to 7. So when the vendors are coming in and signing on fast and furious. We're real excited.
Any questions for Mrs. Walker? None for Mrs. Walker? JBS report, I really don't have anything. Oh, you have a question?
No.
Say goodbye.
Just say bye to our guests.
I don't really have anything that I'd say or present because I know everyone's tired of hearing all the things this evening. But your question, I'm glad to entertain those questions in that respect. It's not ear toward ear. I'm just teasing. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the JBS? The big thing is parking lot is going to start. You'll probably see posts and students have to park different places. And the renovation of the parking lot is going to begin here a couple of days from now. So buses are different, have a little bit different routing in there, but the students are the ones that's being affected and the staff who votes. Starting the renovation of the parking lot. Quite an undertaking because there's lots of asphalt there. And there's some digging that has to go on for underground water to deal with any program that's coming. So there's a lot happening with the parking lot, just so you're all aware. We move on. Is there any board updates anyone would like to share with us?
I had a report, but out this forego until next time. Due to the lateness of our...
Okay. The only other thing that I think that we might want to talk about is the presentation we saw tonight. I would say that we ask for the resolution so that we can take that under consideration, so we can read that resolution. And I would think that if we're going to give that some thought and consideration as once that resolution reaches us, we can possibly have that on the board agenda next month. Because I do believe that we've had internal conversations in different committees, and Amanda has presented that to us multiple times. So I think each of us have done some of our own research already. So please give that some thought, and we could possibly have that on the agenda so we can take action on that sooner than later. Personnel recommendations, item number 11. Mr. Molinar?
Before I go to that, I just want to say thank you to Amy for the excellent presentation. And also, Mr. Resnick, who was here this evening. We're not going to soapbox right now because of the time. But I will say this, that, you know, when you look at the data and what's happening in the state, you clearly see that our board, our school has done a phenomenal job of having excellent education for what revenue we have to spend over the years and not having new operating money since 2012. Again, done a phenomenal job. Amy, Sarah and I have a meeting next Thursday. We're going offsite to go more into the data, talk about other things. We come back over the next few months to work with the board to tell the story. Because in the future, as we look to what's necessary as we've adjusted spending, you know, Amherst does not have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem. And when you go for operating levis in our state, because of the state, boards and school districts are usually pitted against community members. So whether operating levis need or not, that's not going to happen. In Amherst, it is not going to be the board against the community or against the unions or the unions against the community. It's going to be all of us really against the state. We have to support ourselves because the state's not doing it. So as we get farther down the road here in the next couple of weeks and months, we're going to make sure we use the data to tell the story that we have a revenue problem that's directed primarily at the state, not from our community members, not from our board, not from Super Ten Treasurer or our staff. It's the state problem. We're going to make sure the community is aware of that.
And you've heard this before. Arv Esar just kicked that can down the road, right? And you've been to presentations certainly in the last couple of years at OSTCA Capital Conference that talked about the fiscal cliff after Esar, after the stimulus money. So what Mr. Molinar is talking about, the revenue issue, we knew that once Arv Esar was gone and all those revenue streams that were $4.2 million, that those expenditures would go back to the general fund. And those are instructional costs and teachers and support services for our students, and none of them being unnecessary or ill-placed. So what Mr. Molinar is talking about was just exacerbated by Arv Esar. And yes, we are going to have a lot of work to do, the executive team here.
And I also think we need to keep in mind that when you look back at Amy's exhibit showing federal funding that comes to the state of Ohio, we don't know where that's going to play out either. Because that number, even if it would increase to the state, the state's going to do what with that number? So where we now get $7 million or whatever that number was that I can remember off the top of my head from federal funding, if that all goes back to the state, we probably won't get that dollar. And in the position that we are in right now with the state funding anyway, we would be in the lower part of that spectrum, in my opinion. So I think that that's important, to keep that in the back of your minds as you tell, if you're ready to tell the story, to explain the story to all of us.
So we'll move on to personnel. There are 11 items this evening. And again, I emailed the board this afternoon a few changes that came in. We came with personnel. There was one change to Mr. Tony's contract here at NORD. Also, we had another resignation, Segregated Teacher Carter Morris. I think that's just the board that she's with in Columbus, but it's actually Colorado. So, yeah. It's not going to work out.
It starts with a C.
Yeah, it's not going to work out. She can't come here from Colorado, so. Great teacher, we'll miss her, but, yeah. And also the administrative contract. So I'd like to recommend personnel items 11A through K.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there discussion, questions, or comments on personnel? Hearing none or seeing any, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Moving right on down the agenda?
Yeah, educational items, there are five routine items. Again, there were six, but I emailed the board that we removed one. And again, I'll state that Sarah can go in if she wants to, but there might be a change with our personnel that we contract with for Lorraine Public Health. Right, Public Health. And so we need to remove the contract to see what might happen.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for educational recommendations. A would be discussion or comments. Hearing or seeing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Business recommendations, item 15.
There are seven items. The first three were a quote from last month for signature services for our elevators and also key volume care. And we did correct the Germans Villa item. So we had a conflict between the day, which was Saturday, and the date, which was May 6th. May 6th is correct. It's not for prom, it's for the senior awards banquet. So now it's corrected to be the correct day and date, Tuesday, May 6th.
I have a question about that.
So do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion. We have a motion and a second.
Got it.
Questions or comments? No question. In the contract, there is no dollar amount in this contract. There is no dollar amount. After I went back and looked at that, and as it's sitting here for me to sign, it wants me to initial something about a, if one thing is non-refundable, that there's no dollar amount for that. There's no dollar amount for the rental of the facility at all in this contract. Just so you're aware of that.
That was the same way last year.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, so I'm just saying, I don't know whether we're not, you know, I don't know whether we're not being charged, but if that's the case, I think it should be stated that we're getting that because of the amount of money we're spending on food and food. But where it wants me to initial for the... But where it wants me to initial for the cost of the deposit, did we give a deposit? Because on here, it did not state that we had given any deposit or when the deposit was due. So I just want everyone to know that from that perspective. And you said it was similar to that. We have, so we have the question. Even though we have a standing agreement, I think it should be here if something were to happen to Mr. German, we could be kicked to the curb real easily and have no recourse to correct that.
I'll check to Mr. Tony to see if there's maybe there's some cost. He's a great supporter of our district.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Or possibly it changes depending on the number of participants people show up, so.
But that's not spelled out in here. All it is is saying that we need to provide 10 days for. So however we're paying for that facility needs to be outlined.
Do you want to take it off?
Yeah, I would take it whatever.
So let's just remove it, let's knock table. We're going to bring it back from a table standpoint. So we'll just do this.
So we're, I'm going to amend my.
We're going to wait for you to remove it?
When to remove it?
Our next voting is until April 21st, which means if there's.
We don't have an approval, we don't have an amount.
Okay. Well.
Well, I don't think that we're not going to approve it. I just think if something should happen, it needs to be approved.
Do we approve it? We don't sound like it.
Is there, is there a date in there specified for a deposit? That's all I'm asking, because our meeting is until April 21st.
There is not. It clearly states. The non-refundable all rental fees due the day you book your event and sign the contract. But there's no dollar amount associated to that. So I can sign this contract as soon as you get it done, and then we can come back and approve it because I don't think any of us will approve that from that perspective. But I'm just saying, it doesn't give us any, it doesn't give a dollar amount.
Oh, wow.
You see, holding the date though?
Well, that's my concern. So I'll communicate with Joe and Jackie tomorrow.
The only dollar amount that is in here is a $375 per hour if you wanted to go longer than you have contracted for. Well, nowhere in here do I see what hours we have contracted for. And I'm sure some of the other ones have read that as well. So I just wanted to bring that out from that perspective.
So I'm going to amend my motion to approve A, B, C, E, F, G to have.
So the motion is to remove.
exclude date.
exclude date, yes. All right. And that's all been done correctly now. Is there any other questions or comments on any of that? Hearing or seeing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel?
Hi.
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Is there anything else that anyone would like to bring to the board this evening? There's no need for executive session, but I'm knowledgeable. This evening has happened in the last couple of days.
I'll make a motion.
If there's not, you have a motion on the floor to adjourn in a second?
Mark says so.
A second? Is there discussion or comment on adjournment? Hearing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?